Everyone who's joined us today, readers, writers, butchers, bakers, candlestick makers, you are all very welcome. Our colleagues in the Arts Council, Kerry Anne, who's done all of the heavy lifting and putting this event together, thank you. We'll introduce on a kind of step by step basis so that we're not repeating ourselves and we keep things moving for you. I do have a little bit of housekeeping that I'd like to mention if that's all right. So as Kerry Anne said, keep your mute on and then unmute when we get further into things and you want to ask questions or raise your hand. We are also going to record this event. Obviously, we'll adhere to GDPR and let us know if you have any problems with that. Maybe just drop us a note again in the chat box, but we are going to record it because obviously with this year's residency going digital, a lot of the material and anything we're doing around the residency will be of that nature. So thank you for your understanding in that regard. A brief little bit of history to this residency. I'm sure many of you know of it. It's been a huge success in the two and a half and now going into year three that's been running. It came directly from the man himself and his own generosity in which he was very specific in his will. And he said he wanted his estate, the benefit of that estate to be used specifically for the people of Athlone. Last couple of years, we've been incredibly lucky with Anne-Marie and Martin both physically located in Athlone and so able to deliver very much on that request and bequest by Broderick himself. Then last year, all our worlds paused, obviously, particularly in terms of arts and culture events where you are very much dependent on an audience and being around and having that energy of your audience. And so we paused and thought it'll be fine, as we all did, we'll be fine in a couple of months, you know, we'll get it going then. That was not the case. So we were very lucky with this year's announcement that Keith clearly had skin in the game when it came to digital delivery. I know he's recently delivered the Red Line Festival in Tala. And so we are delighted that we are this year going to a digital format with somebody who is, by all accounts, a very safe pair of hands. And also the democracy it kind of brings to the residency, which previously, for good reason, was very focused in Athlone. And that's respectful of John Broderick's own wishes. But now, I suppose, almost because we have to and because it's necessitated by circumstances outside of our control, we're moving to a wider format and I suppose a more democratic there for more people from around the county can join. The really varied schedule of events and programming that will be happening over the 10 weeks of Keith's residency. And I look forward to hearing him go through that. So I've probably forgotten something, but I have Sinead and Garode coming up behind me who will pick up the pieces if I have. Yeah, just not to forget about the mute, just so we can keep things moving and that we are recording you. And yeah, over to Sinead. And before I pass over fully, just to say a huge thank you to Sinead. This is very much a two-hander, the Arts Council and Westmeath County Council. And certainly we wouldn't have this residency and the caliber of candidates that attracts and writers we get without all the work that Sinead and her colleagues do with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Miriam. Thank you, Miriam. On behalf of the Arts Council, we're delighted to be supporting the launch of the third writer in residence in Athlone funded, as Miriam said, to the late John Broderick's very generous bequest to the Arts Council. As Miriam said, for the benefit and enhancement of the arts in Athlone, John Broderick's bequest is extraordinary, Dennis. It is rooted in his love and his deep connection to his hometown of Athlone. And we'll talk a little bit more about John Broderick himself a little bit later. And so we're delighted partnering with Westmeath County Council in ensuring that John Broderick's bequest is put to the best use possible for the people of Athlone. Responding to John Broderick's own journey as a professional writer, the residency also supports writers, professional and emerging. And we, all resident artists so far, Anne-Marie McQuarren, who is in all the residents, welcome, Anne-Marie, good to see you again, and Martin Dyer have generously provided a mentoring opportunity for local writers and creating new momentum locally for the written word, which is a brilliant legacy for John Broderick. We're delighted Keith Payne will take up the mantle this year as a third writer in residence so far. Welcome Keith on board. As Miriam said, in the most challenging of circumstances indeed, in terms of moving to an online programme. The residencies have been very much rooted in place, rooted in Athlone. And for Keith, who currently can't be in Athlone, faces a challenge in how to be in and connect to a place and to people when he can't be in that place. So no pressure, Keith, in that one. We wish Keith really well and look forward to how he connects Athlone and John Broderick in a most innovative and virtual of ways. And hopefully before the years as we can come together again and celebrate the residencies. And again, John Broderick's very generous bequest, I feel John Broderick is always in the space with us when we talk about him in this context. So I'm delighted to hand you over to Garode Ryan, who is the oracle on all things John Broderick in Athlone and Kentucky too. Garode.
Well, I have been asked to say a few words about John Broderick himself. And John died over 30 years ago now. And for the last nine years of his life, he was living in Bath in England. We think John was attracted to Bath because of the romantic view described in the novels of Jane Austen, the writer he really admired. But the reality of living in Bath didn't at all live up to his expectations. John hankered for home. He wanted the humdrum provincial life which he had left behind him and for the wide open expanses of the land below Athlone, the Boglands and the Shannon Callows, places that he loved to go for a walk with his dogs, and places where he could often go without meeting another soul. And that often suited him. I knew John Broderick for the last 15 or 16 years of his life. John was always generous to a fault. During his lifetime, he donated many books to the local library, books which he had received to review from either Hibernia or the Irish Times. And he was also very generous in his encouragement of young writers. And for this encouragement, I for one am very grateful. But as they say, John was different. John was noted for his sartorial elegance. He usually wore a three-piece suit, complete with watch chain, and he would have looked at home in any Edwardian parlour. He was born into a successful bakery concern, which not only provided many Athlonians with their daily bread, but also had a reach right out to the west of Ireland. His early years were spent in Connet Street, where he worked in the shop, helped out in the shop, and he met the women of Connet Street. He earwiggled on their conversations and he stored up a welted material which he later incorporated into the body of his novels. Even as a child, John Broderick was something of a solitary being. He was the only child of a doting mother who was widowed after only three years of marriage, when John himself was just three years old. He received his early education here in Athlone from the Sisters of Mercy. And then he went on to a local boys' national school in the Batteries, where he was popular because he owned a leather football. That was unusual in those days. Unfortunately, poor John more often than not had to stand on the sideline watching his friends play the football because he wasn't selected. But such was life. We think that 1936 must have been a devastating year for John Broderick. He was 12 years old when his mother remarried, a marriage of convenience really. She married the bakery manager, Paddy Flynn. And as a result of this, John was sent away to boarding school. Throughout his life, John never actually related well to a stepfather. So initially, he was sent to Summerhill College Sligo. But when that didn't work out, he was then sent to Garbly College in Ballaslow, which was nearer to home. Now, he left school at 17 before sitting his leaving certificate. And he went on to self-educate himself. He developed a vast knowledge of English literature. John Broderick, as I said, was different. And throughout his life, he enjoyed a very close relationship with his mother. Becoming more of a companion than a son to her, he was always the preferred escort at social occasions. And from an early age, John showed an interest in French literature. He was reading the works of Mo Pisson, Mariac, Madame Colette, and Julian Green. And he took off for Paris in the early 1950s, where he lived for a couple of years. And during that time, he met several important and influential people. The French novelist Julian Green, he met Gore Vidal and Ernest Hemingway. And he returned to Ireland in 1953 and started to work at becoming a writer himself. By the late 1950s, he had contributed to travel articles to a number of places, including the Irish Times. And that was followed by several failed attempts as a novelist until the publication of The Pilgrimage in 1961. It was promptly banned by the censorship of publications board. And the French writer Julian Green considered a masterpiece in itself. Three novels appeared over the next four years, The Fugitives in 1962, Don Juanín in 1963, and The Waking of Willie Ryan in 1965. And all of these books have strong Athlone associations. And many think, including John Broderick himself, think that The Waking of Willie Ryan was perhaps his finest achievement. For much of his life, John struggled with two separate issues, his homosexuality or perhaps bisexuality, and his alcoholism. After the publication of The Waking of Willie Ryan, John Broderick lost several years when he was drinking to excess and neglecting his writing. A novel which had been submitted first in 1969 and rejected was eventually published as An Apology for Roses. When it was published, it sold 30,000 copies in paperback in the first week. And then it too was seized by the censorship board, but it wasn't actually banned. When asked for his opinion, John Broderick himself quipped, well, it seems okay to buy a hardback for £2.50, but to let it loose on the general populace for £0.35 was dangerous. And he taught himself that the customs officers just wanted a free read. Following the sudden death of his mother in 1974, John was very unsettled. He even briefly contemplated joining the priesthood, which seemed quite unusual for John. He travelled to Rome to visit the English college that was a favourite spot for later vocations. But later, he thought he might do better as a writer and that he could write better about Athlone by doing so from a distance. So he sold the family home in Athlone and he sold the family bakery. And he moved to Dublin briefly before he moved on to Bath. John brought his fateful housekeeper Mary Scanlan with him to live in Bath. Which of them was most out of their depth in Bath? It's hard to tell. Certainly, John was lonely and he spent hours on the phone to friends in Ireland here lamenting his move and considering a move back to Ireland, possibly to Wexford or even to Athlone. And while living in Bath, he finished his novel The Flood, which was the first of a planned trilogy. But he was very disappointed with the reviews it received. The English novelist and biographer DJ Taylor was one of the few reviewers who actually got what John was trying to do. However, undeterred, he went on and he was writing The Irish Magdalene when he suffered a fall and a stroke in August 1988. That was followed by a second stroke early in 1989, and John never recovered from this. And he died in Bath in England in May 1989. He was brought back here to Athlone for burial. And in 1999, 10 years later, Athlone UDC named a new street in his honour, John Broderick Street. Since his death, John Broderick has been the subject of articles, literary weekends, and a sympathetic biography by Madeleine Kingston. Three of his novels and a selection of his writings and criticisms have been republished by Lilyfoot Press. Now, John's legacy in terms of his published writings is very considerable. However, today, we're here to celebrate the fruits of his financial legacy to his native town. The impact of the first two John Broderick writers in residence has been enormous. Several important up-and-coming writers have got benefit from the scheme. I think of award-winning writers, people such as the poet Jackie Gorman and Paul McCarrick, the poet and short story writer Rory Duffy, and also Jacinta Daly, who is currently completing a memoir which has already been accepted for publication. And of course, the poet Amy Barrie. Our first two writers, Anne-Marie McQuarren and Martin Dyer, have helped in no small measure to revitalise the art scene in Athlone. I have a vivid memory after one reading that two writers independently said to me, did you ever think you would see this happening in Athlone? My answer, of course, was no. But it has happened. Countless people have been introduced to the novels of John Broderick. People of all ages have been encouraged to read and to write. And I think of the second level students who attended Anne-Marie's workshops and were introduced to the works of both Irish and international writers. I think of the schoolchildren, especially a class from Sculnagair and Wash Three, who were introduced to the joys of poetry by Martin Dyer. It'll only be in the years to come that we will fully appreciate the real value of the work that has been done by both Anne-Marie McQuarren and Martin Dyer. In terms of writing, I think we could say that John Broderick put Athlone on the map. He'd be delighted to see that as a direct result of his bequest, more writers and poets from Athlone are featuring now in literary journals, both online and in print. They're also appearing in anthologies and even having their own books and chapbooks published. This scheme has brought about a true renaissance of writing in Athlone. And I've no doubt that Keith Payne, himself an award-winning poet and translator, and someone with enormous experience of teaching both nationally and internationally, will build on the work of both Anne-Marie and Martin. And he too will go down in the annals of Athlone as one of the writers who has brought about a major revitalisation of the literary scene in John Broderick's beloved Athlone. Without further ado, I have great pleasure now in handing you over to Keith Payne, the recipient of this third John Broderick Writer in Residence Award. Thank you.
Many, many thanks, Garode. Thank you so much for that really heartfelt and generous introduction. I'd like, first of all, well, to thank all of you, the participants who have joined us here today for some more screen time. I know we're all itching for walks and fresh air as much as we can. So I do really, really much appreciate you being here. I'd like to thank, first of all, the Arts Council of Ireland, Westmeath Arts Office, and the John Broderick bequest itself for enabling this residency that had my predecessors, Anne-Marie McKinnon and Martin Dyer first, and now myself. And I'm genuinely and truly honoured to participate in this. And also to thank personally for their stinting work, Miriam Mulrennan in the Arts Office in Westmeath, Sinead O'Reilly from the Arts Council, Garode, who is essential and is constantly present right through these years, behind the scenes and deservedly right in front as well. And also Kerry, who's managing the digital setup of today. So just briefly, a little bit about myself, I suppose. As Garode mentioned, I'm a poet and translator. I translate from the Spanish and the Galician for most of the time. Currently, my work focuses on, simply put, where and how we live. I'm looking closely at essentially suburbia, particularly from the 1980s up to the early 2000s, where in places like Tala, where I'm from, Tala Village went from a small village of 700 people up to 80,000 people in the space of 10 years. The same happened in Luccan, in Clondalkin, in Blanchestown, and then throughout the whole country. And I find this period, the suburbanisation of Irish society, looking at both the benefits and some of what we missed as well by removing people from the city centre and that strong community feel. But I'm also just looking at the built environment, what these houses are made of. And I'm fascinated, I can give you 25 minutes on pebble dash if you like, but I won't do it just now. But skirting boards, fascia boards, soft closing drawers in the kitchen, kitchen islands, garden gates, those low breeze block walls that we all had, something that is such a huge part of what is now, it's now up to 70, almost 80% of people live in an urban environment in this country. Such a huge part of our lives. And I'm just interested in looking at that, looking at the imagination and also the imagined life behind the homogeneous windows and pebble dash breeze block walls. And I think, and this is really an accident, it wasn't planned, I promise, during quarantine, we've all become so, so familiar with our home places. And if you consider that this two-mile radius actually gives you almost 14, 15 square miles to go and walk and listen and smell and see and touch and feel and meet, while the 5K or the five-mile radius, almost 50 square miles. So there's a hell of a lot out there, right on your doorstep, on either side of your front door, that we can really think about. And I believe says a lot about who we are and how we've become what we are. And matching with that, I'm thinking of what's known in American criticism as the poetry of the everyday, reaching back to say the likes of Frank O'Hara in the 1950s, who kind of took poetry down off the academic mantle of very dense and hard to enter modernism and said, no, the everyday language belongs in poetry. It's the language we're most used, the language we use, so it deserves to be in our poetry. So I'm going to carry that, hopefully, across into the workshops. And I'll tell you a bit about that now. The residency itself essentially has four strands. The first of which is a 10-week creative writing workshop. It's open to everybody in the county of Westmeath. It's free of charge. And I really, really want to insist it's open to all levels. If, don't even consider for a moment if you think your ability, if you want to do this, you come and join. And there's a place for you. That is absolutely number one. Over the 10 weeks, I'll encourage you to trust what it is that you see and how you see it. And then we look at various writers from all across the globe, just like John Broderick himself did, reading writers in translation and in English and essay and poetry, writers like Werner Herzog, who walked from Munich to Paris to save his mentor's life. And he believed by doing so, she would live, and she did. And how he wrote about the landscape he walked through. Writers like Paula Meehan, one of the great Irish poets and Irish chair, professor of poetry, who has written so much about her locale of the north inner city of Dublin. We look at Galician writers as well. But all the way, these will be templates for the writers to see what other people have done with their version of their home place. There will also be a mentorship for one poet who was working towards a full collection that will run also for the 10 weeks. And that's open to any poets in Westmeath who have the bones, who almost have their manuscript ready to present. We work together as Anne-Marie did and as Martin did with previous poets in Athlone who are now going to be published. I'll work one-to-one with that and offer as best I can my advice and my close reading of their work. There will also be a strand of writers' clinics, which are shorter one-to-one sessions, again, open to writers of all genres from Westmeath, who maybe not haven't got the full manuscript ready, but are a little more advanced and are starting to think about what they'd like to write. And then finally, for me, always the most exciting element of any residency is the book club. I mean, there's 32 of us here today. I would say in the high twenties of us, we were read stories as kids and/or we read stories to our children. Why the hell did you stop? Why did we stop reading out loud to each other? It is one of the greatest luxuries in life, to sit down with a cup of tea or a glass of wine, if you can manage it, and have someone read to you. And I think gathering together in a room, a virtual room on this occasion, and reading to each other is so essential. John Berger talks about the body of the musician or the storyteller or the poet, and how all the bodily parts matter, the mouth, the lips, the throat, the esophagus, down to the belly, the body of the instrument, the body of the room where we're sitting. And he traces this back to the idea of sitting around the fire, you know. And for that one hour or two hours or afternoon, while we're living in the story that we're listening to, we're safe and we're protected from everything that's going on outside. Okay. So I'll be hosting a book club online. And we're going to be looking at Ondavardoun's Quite the Moon Travels in parallel with an anthology of animal poems from Deadless Press called The Word Arc. Now, why those two titles? Well, Ondavardoun's beautiful, beautiful work from Schian Press, one of the leading new presses in this country, doing fabulous work, comes directly from the oral tradition. It's oral tales. He's managed with great acknowledging the difficulty and almost impossibility of wrestling an oral story onto the page and fixing it. But he's managed to do it. So I'm taking that oral strand into the book club as a storytelling. And then also the parallel book, The Word Arc of Animal Poems, simply because, folks, it really is time that we strengthen or we increase our conversation about the environment, you know? If we're looking at the home place, where we live, how we live, and if you're out on your daily walks and you're noticing the wildflowers, the snowdrops are up, I know, for a good couple of weeks, I believe the dafts are starting bravely to show through. We need to look at these things and acknowledge them. And I believe that while it's good to be honest and true and tell things as they are and admit the problems, the mess we've made of a lot of this, it's more powerful to express it through love and admiration. And a lot of these poems in The Word Arc and a lot of the stories it owns book are homages to the delight of the flora and fauna around us. And Gary Schneider would be a proponent of this idea, that if you really appreciate your environment, you're more likely to take care of it than if someone's berating you for not recycling, you know? So we're going to read those two. And again, all of these strands are informal, as playful and as fun and as accessible as we can make it. Everybody is welcome to these. There will also be some as yet to be announced events, some readings I hope to arrange, and some work I hope to do on John Broderick, which I'll come to in a moment. But one of my main focuses for this residency is to reach out and to include the new Irish community living in Athlone. I visited Athlone last year, thanks to Garode, who took me on a great John Broderick tour. We did a brilliant tour. And then he recommended a delicious thigh restaurant to me, which I went to. But sitting, having coffee on the main street with Garode, I noticed the population passing on the street when we could walk freely on the street. What a wonderful time that was and will be again. But I noticed there's a huge new Irish community in Athlone. And it is really essential. It's so enriching that we include them. And I include them in all this process, in this residency. I think Broderick himself, as a great traveller and a great reader of literature, of global literature, would agree, I hope. And the more I look in his archive, I'll find this out for sure. But it is absolutely enriching for us, let's call it the established Irish or the ones who've been here for a while, to engage with this new Irish community, hear their stories from their home place, and also hear their stories of what they think about the new home place. So I know we're live now on Athlone Community Radio, for Arts Sake radio show. So I'm sending this call out across the, let's be optimistic, across the globe, and asking, really encouraging new Irish community members in Westmeath to come and join us. Don't worry for a second if English is not your first language. I speak various languages and I work in translation, and that is never a problem. In fact, it's more interesting when we have various language groups bouncing around the room. And that kind of brings me to Athlone and to Broderick himself. A lot of you will remember on the old radio dials, you know, you'd go through the dial and you'd have Hilversum and Budapest and Helsinki, and there was Athlone right along the dial, you know? And when I was thinking about the Broderick residency, I remembered this, Almira Athlone standing out. And I still, there's a radio in my sister-in-law's house and it's still on there. And, you know, I think it's a lovely metaphor that Athlone, the geographical centre, was at one point where the transmission for radio air at the time went and reached all across the globe. So kind of continuing that idea, isn't it great that now the world is coming into Athlone? And I think we have a great opportunity to make the most of that. As both Miriam and Garode mentioned, you know, in the ideal world, I would have been in Athlone now and delving into the archive and meeting all of you. We really are hopeful that towards the end, or even as a wrap-up at the end, this will happen. But since it can't, I'm somewhat limited to what I can do. But I do intend looking at, I'm very interested in Broderick's travel articles. One of his first articles accepted for the Irish Times was from his travels. And I'm really interested to see And I'm really interested to see his descriptions of these foreign places because, you know, as Gero had mentioned in The Waking of Willie Ryan, in The London Irish, in Pilgrimage, his sense of place is so important, you know? He even has a character, I think his name was Daly in London Irish, he said, even though he'd come a long way from Furti, he'd brought all his household gods with him. And that idea of bringing your home with you. So I'm interested in looking into his travel work, even some diaries if they exist, but definitely the articles. And also looking at some of the translation work that was done of John Broderick. And I think that for me can kind of wrap it up. Aside just again to thank everyone, thank all of you for joining in, thank everyone for their assistance. I really, really am looking forward to this. All information about the various strands of the workshop will be up on the John Broderick residency WordPress, that's the website. I'll be, I've taken that over now, I'll be working that tonight and tomorrow, putting all this up. My email for anything to do with the residency is writer@westmeathco.co.ie Feel free to get in touch with anything. And please feel welcome to join, you're welcome to join. That's, we want you in, we want you here, okay? Thanks very much, everybody. And I think we're going to open it up now to the chatroom or such. I'll hand back to Miriam or Sinead.
Thank you so much, Keith. That was great, thank you. Gives a great flavour of what's coming our way in the coming months. And it's just delightful to have things to put in the diary that we know we'll enjoy. I always say I'll get down to the residencies when I'm trying to make it to Athlone and that becomes difficult. But there's something a little bit more relaxed about being able to plug into something like this. So I'm really looking forward to it. And in particular, your recommendations for the book club. I was curious, as you were chatting there, if if you feel your own writing has any kind of alignment with the fact that you're obviously focused on Athlone, although not specifically in Athlone. I'm always curious, residencies are great, but it is important that there's space there as well for your thinking and for for work you might want to be doing. Is there anything in particular that makes you think that might flourish because of your contacts with and context with Westmeath and with Athlone?
It will definitely, Miriam. I mean, at the moment, currently, we are, myself, my partner are reading Mancon Magan's Thirty Two Words for a Field, which to give, I believe tomorrow Anne-Marie and Kit on and Mancon are in conversation, which we're really looking forward to. But Mancon, a Westmeath resident, gives an amazingly in-depth sense of place through the study of language. And that has just opened up a huge portal for my work. So I'll continue that. I'm in contact with Mancon. And as I continue to read more of Broderick's work and looking at place names and the evocation of place of Westmeath, that will definitely filter in. And I think apart from filtering into the poetry itself, it will spring essays and review work and non-fictions work that will respond to that. Yeah, so absolutely.
I think that's great. And just, I suppose, to say the fact that the three writers who are coming through the residency have now organically found ways to work together, but also are connected with Westmeath from our point of view, from the Westmeath Arts Office, from the Arts Council. It's great to have that kind of, I don't know, it's like an alumni of champions for Broderick. But also there are new things emerging and new projects emerging. So thank you, all three of you very much. That's welcome. Has anyone got any questions? I'm not seeing much on the chat box yet. We need to switch to gallery, Keryanne is telling me, so I'll try and do that now.
Well, I have a question for Keith, to kind of kick us off. And I know it don't keep us too long from the dinner at this point. But Keith, it's just fascinating to hear you, you know, speak about so enthusiastically about this residency opportunity and, you know, immediately engaging, you know, as soon as you said book club, and I wanted to join. So, you know, the fact that, you know, people can join the book club from near and far, I think is really interesting. It'll bring a real virtual spotlight on Athlone as well. And I'm curious of the book, one of the books you'd mentioned there of Ondar Doon's book. And Owen is in residence in Chur, which is his hometown, as a thinker in residence there through the Creative Places Programme. So as two resident artists, there's an interesting connection there in terms of both being moved in place and for Owen in his own home place. Had you thought about, you know, possibly reaching out to Owen as part of the book club as well?
Absolutely. Both Owen and Pat Boreen, the editor of Deadless Press, I'd hopefully convince them wheedlingly to join us on one of the sessions, even, you know, for half an hour to come and have a talk with us. And maybe even, I might even, if Owen's willing, we might even have an interview, a chat, a Zoom chat, similar to what's going to happen tomorrow night, which I think would be interesting. I have found, I included Owen's book in a previous couple of sessions in Talap. And it really was a gorgeous experience. A lot of people had told them, look, turn off your cameras, just sit back. And I saw people had brought their various cups and refreshments. And they just sat back with the cameras off while I read, and then we shared the reading. And at the end, we all came back on again and engaged in the conversation. And it really is in these times, an essential reach out, you know? Sorry, I've gone off your question, which was, Owen, yes, I will definitely be wheedlingly trying to convince Owen to join us for one session. Hopefully he will. I think the work he's done is fascinating. And his use of shelter in the book as well, you know, and the fact that he went to the elders in the Minkair community and asked their permission, first of all, is it okay to use this? And then does he have it right? And I know he's spoken of a lot of them criticizing for not getting the exact detail, you know, which I think is great. That this oral tradition's come down and it's now, thanks to Ski and Press and to Owen, available to all of us, which is so enriching, isn't it?
Yeah, fantastic. If anyone else has a question for Keith, you can, I don't think all cameras are on now, but I mean, certainly raise your hand. Oh, I see Fanula with the hand up.
Thanks, Millian. Keith, that was fantastic. As somebody who's not a writer and has no intentions of ever becoming a writer, I'm extremely interested in your book club idea. It's really accessible and especially now that we can do things online, it's hard to miss anything. But my question for you is, and I think like you've got a very full schedule there, but I'm wearing the hat of a creative schools coordinator. And I'm just wondering, we've piggybacked on the last two writers and residents and it's fantastic. I'm just wondering if you have any intentions of going down that road.
Yeah, absolutely. Fanula, Gero had mentioned it to me. Because I know Anne-Marie did some great work with you before. And Martina as well, I think. But yeah, we'll talk. You drop me a line.
We'll do, yeah, perfect.
Drop me a line. And I mean, we can't do in person, but we'll work something around the digital. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Gerry has a question.
Not so much a question, as a very serious welcome. My name is Gerry Callahan, I'm volunteer with New Horizon, the refugee support group in Athlone. I was absolutely fascinated to listen to your point about the new communities. We're in, we're in, we're in. So you're very, very welcome. And anything that we can do to help, we're in.
Yep. Thanks Gerry. And I have been, send your contact and I will be in touch with you. I know for definitely people, citizens who are in the accommodation centres, the idea is to get them, to bring them outside, you know, to do events out. We're really limited with that, with this online, with the virtual, but myself and yourself will have a chat and we'll get those stories, you know? I mean, again, Ski and Press, who published Owen's book, their first book was This Hostile Life, which came out of the Accommodation and Direct Provision Centres. And I mean, look at that story and those stories that have continued to enrich everybody. So well done and congratulations for your work on New Horizons and thanks for the welcome.
Thanks Keith and Gerry. Theo?
Yeah, hi. I'm exhausted listening to all the things Keith is planning to do here. But Fanula touched on, has prompted me to make a suggestion. We talk about Ireland's ports, we talk about Belfast, we talk about Cork, Dublin, Limerick, Galway. But Athlone is one of our major ports. And, you know, there isn't that perception out there, the great Shannon that bisects the country runs through there. It just occurs to me, this is a random thought, just prompted by enthusiasm at Keith's programme, but wouldn't it be marvellous if the schools were brought together to a bibliography of Shannon writings? There are poems, stories, songs, novels, histories scattered throughout her literature, but nobody has ever pulled them together. And I'm just thinking that as Athlone is the heart of the Shannon, really, you go north, you go south of Athlone, everything flows into and flows out of Athlone. It seems a natural gathering place for the literature of the Shannon. And I just thought, you know, it would be research skills, but also discovery and excitement. I still remember those grim Dutch gunners on the bridge of Athlone from when I was nine, you know? The grim Dutch gunners, I'd them well, do you remember that, Gerry? So I think it would be marvellous to collect that. And if they, and no better man than Keith to entuse the schools and the classes about a project like that. So I hope that's, I know this is off topic, but I'm just, this always just generates so much enthusiasm, you know? Anyway, Sinead, I'm throwing this to you. That's just my suggestion.
Good morning, Miriam. I got to you. Thank you very much. It's a brilliant, brilliant suggestion. And especially the fact that when you mentioned Athlone as one of the great ports, you caught me by surprise. Because I was completely unaware of the notion that Athlone could be seen as a port. And living for part of the years myself, as I do in a port city, the port city of Vigo in the winter on the Atlantic, there's probably parallels to be met between schoolchildren here and schoolchildren in Athlone. You know, which can continue long after this particular residency is over. Great suggestion. Thanks, Theo. Note is made of it.
Thanks, Keith. I'm just spotting there if anyone else has got a hand up. Angus?
Good evening, everybody. And I've really enjoyed the whole discussion, I have to say. I'm the current mayor of Athlone. So a big welcome to you, Keith. Congratulations on the residency. You certainly promised to jam pack it with all that you've described, the book club and the workshop and so on. I really, you know, it's great to hear that you're encouraging people of all abilities to come forward and to engage. And I think that's wonderful, wonderful to hear. And wish you the very, very best of luck. And to congratulate Anne-Marie and Martin for the great work that they have done over the course of the last two years. I suppose, I just wanted to mention one person if I could, and Gero will know this gentleman well. A man by the name of George Eaton. George Eaton was a very, very close friend of John Broderick for very many years. And John, after his death 32 years ago, remained a priority of George. And George did all that he could to promote John Broderick and arranged on a number of occasions the rep publication of a number of Broderick's books along the way with the support of some local businesses. And he also, you know, worked hard in a society that he chaired for very many years to educate people of the extent of Broderick's work. Unfortunately, we lost George last summer. I just wouldn't have thought that, you know, we should let this occasion pass today without mentioning George and thanking him for all of his work in the promotion of Broderick for all of those years. And he was a dear friend of mine as well and a dear friend of Athlone. So look at, Keith, the very, very best of luck. Of course, we'll be meeting again, I'm sure, across virtual platforms for the time being. But hopefully before your residency ends, we'll get to meet. And the best of luck in the meantime.
Thanks very much. Very pleasure. Thank you.
So lovely acknowledgement, councillor work. Thank you for that. And Miriam said earlier, it's like, every year as the residency expands, we're expanding, you know, the John Broderick family, you know? And it's great to acknowledge Geordie's connection and contribution as well to this to Athlone and to literature. Scan here for any more hands because we're coming close to the end. And I've got a burning question they want to ask. Pop it in the chat box or you can stick your hand up. I'm going to try to scan and see if I can see everybody. I don't see any more hands up. So if that, oh, Miriam.
I just want to mention Athlone Community Radio, who are broadcasting us live. They're always such great supporters of the arts and culture and all our events in the county, and we really depend on them. So we're very grateful that you plugged in to us today. And the For Arts Sake show is, as I said, one of the champions of what we try to do around the county. So thank you, Philomena and Irina.
Thank you. You're welcome. Great to be here, great to record you, lovely to broadcast to you. So thank you.
And can I just remind everyone before we go, over the next days and weeks and throughout the residency, the John Broderick residency WordPress is where you'll find all the info and all the links. And also writer@westmeathco.co.ie is where you can get me with regard to any residency queries, information or suggestions even. So keep both of those in mind. And that's where you'll find all the info going up over the next few days and throughout the residency. Okay. And thanks again to everybody.
Thank you so much, Keith. Thank you, Miriam. And I want to, Westmeath County Council for being such wonderful hosts of this residency programme. We're really looking forward to connecting with you over the next number of weeks as the residency kicks off. And I'd be delighted to do so, even virtually, I think we'll feel even more connected to us than we might normally do. The best look, Keith, and thank you very much, everyone. Miriam, do you want to say anything there as we close off?
I think you've covered it all there, Sinead. Just to give you the sort of the block of time that we'll have, Keith, is mid-March to mid-May, would that be fair to say? So we'll be doing a lot of the prep and the work in kind of getting people signed up to the various strands over the next few weeks. So keep an eye on our website, on the website that Keith has, listen, you'll hear about our events, we'll be advertising them widely. So yeah, see you all again back here, hopefully.
Thank you all. Goodbye, everybody. Good evening.
Very much.
Thank you. That was fantastic.